Welcome to the Dougherty County Board of Commissioners meeting with your chairman, Christopher S. Cohelis. Your commissioners include, from District One, Commissioner Ed Newsom; from District Two, Commissioner Victor Edwards; from District Three, Commissioner Plinton Johnson; from District Four, Commissioner Russell Gray; from District Five, Commissioner Gloria Gaines; and from District Six, Commissioner Anthony Jones. Also joining us is your county administrator, Michael McCoy; Assistant County Administrator, Scott Addison; County Clerk, Jawan Ware; and County Attorney, Spencer Lee. Thank you for joining your Dougherty County Commission meeting.
All right. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Go ahead and call to order the Dougherty County Commission regular meeting for August 2nd, 2021. Begin with roll call and hope for the record that everyone is present. And in person, if I could, please have everyone stand for the prayer and then the pledge in that order. Dear heavenly Father, thank you for this time that we have to come together for the citizens of Dougherty County. Thank you for the resources that you've given us. Thank you for the guidance that you've given us over the past pandemic. And as we continue to move forward, please continue to provide a steady hand that guides our ship so that we can navigate these waters. In Christ's name we pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Consider for action the minutes of the July 12th work session. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? There being none, we'll call the matter for a vote. Those who favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We'll now move on to delegations. This is where the commissioner will hear comments of those items pertaining to Dougherty County for which public hearing has not been held or scheduled. We ask everyone to be brief to the point and consider it of time for others. We will begin first with James Morgan, County Extension Coordinator, present to update the commission with a quarterly report, and to introduce Latrina West, the new 4-H agent to the board. Good morning, Mr. Morgan and Ms. West. How are you? Good.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I'm here to present to you our second quarter report from Corporate Extension. As always, we appreciate all of your contributions to our organization. I'll start with our 4-H program. We just wrapped up our 4-H camp and seizing. We've had several of our kids to go to junior senior camp as well as to Global Leaf Camp. Here in Dougherty County, we held a three-day STEM camp with Work County, and the kids were at our office for three days. We had about seventeen kids there. And we also hosted a 4-H craft day. Right now, our students are in, we have two students who are in the process of going to New Orleans on this coming Friday to participate in a national cooking cook-off that will represent Albany. They're they're senior foragers who just graduated and are on their way to college. And so that's part of what we've done in the last three months for 4-H. On the ag side, in the last three months, I've put on eight workshops and attended one event that had a total of 259 participants. Tomorrow, I start my first pilot program for my online master garden, of course. We have six people signed up for that. This is the first ever in the state. And a little nervous about it, but kind of happy that we're able to offer classes again. We have five from Dougherty County and one from Tipp County that would be participating. I also co-host an ag radio show now with Karen Lawrence of Southwest Georgia Project every third Wednesday on 88.3 WUTU. That's a radio station that is owned by the Southwest Georgia Project organization. We talk all ag, just to our ag community. The last few events that, or the last few times on the radio, we covered COVID-19 and effects on agriculture, rural stress on farmers, pecan pest management, and the American Rescue Plan debt relief for social disadvantaged farmers. So all of, and we also host guests on our show as well. On the family consumer science side, we wrapped up our virtual income tax assessment program or assistance program where we offer free tax services to individuals making $65,000 or less and that are fill, who are filling out short form taxes. And we were able to help sixty-four residents in Dougherty County, and that was a savings of $19,691 in fees that they would have had to pay to have someone do their taxes for them. And this is the fifth year for that program, and we will continue to do that. It is sponsored by the University of Georgia and the University of Florida. One last item, our expanded food nutrition education program. We have Katori Cannon. She has started doing in-person meetings with our clientele. And she's currently working with Open Arms. She's providing information to them once a week, but because of our COVID numbers, they are now going back to doing Zoom classes. So she'll do Zoom classes with those mothers at Open Arms on August 30th, going through now through August 31st. And so that's just a little bit of what we've been doing. I've also gave you all the Farmgate. Our Farmgate survey is a yearly survey that we put a value on agriculture in Dougherty County. And the 2020 Farmgate value is assessed at $57,692. That includes things like row crops, livestock, chicken houses, any fruits and vegetables, as well as our livestock. And if you have any questions about that, I can go a little more in depth on our Farmgate survey. And finally, most of you all knew that Jasmine Thomas left us in January to go and be the city planner for, or the city manager, downtown city manager for Perry. And we have been able to hire Latrina West as our new 4-H agent. She started yesterday. Even though it was a Sunday, we start agents on the first of the month. And I would like for her to just tell you a little bit about herself. If you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you. Good morning, Ms. West.
Good morning. I'm Latrina West. I'm a former educator with the Chris County School System. I worked there for the past six years. I'm looking forward to being able to develop the youth in this county. And thank you.
Awesome. You're welcome. Yes, could I just?
From Mr. Morgan. I'm sorry. Yeah. It's your second day, young lady. I'm gonna put you on the spot. Good morning, sir.
Good morning.
I want to just point out, I'm impressed with just some of the quality of life and basic services that you all are kind of getting into, the tax preparation for citizens, and this framework grant that talks about this Elevate and relationship counseling and building. That, I think that's very important to to our community and a lot of how we interact with each other, whether it be marriage relationships or whatever relationships you all are discussing in Elevate. Would you take some time and talk a little bit more about Elevate?
Yes, I can discuss that. That is a six-year multimillion-dollar grant that the university received. It first looked at trying to talk about marriage relationships on military bases with military families. And we reached out to the military base, but we didn't get any people who want to be in that program. So it's counseling on relationship and financial management counseling. We are actually doing it in Lee, in Lee County at a church right now, and also Suzanne is working in Culver County. We're going to start a second class here in October. We've given Mrs. Howell the information so that she can send it out to all the county employees. And then you all have a card there. It's eight lessons or eight workshops. They get incentives for going through the workshops, and those are gift cards, several hundred dollars in gift cards. And we provide childcare for any of the parents who have children. We have certified childcare providers for that.
That's good. And and you said it's for?
Just right now, it's for any, any married couples.
But you bringing it, is it coming to Dougherty County soon?
Well, yes. It's here now. We're just using the church over in Leesburg. And I think, I'm not sure how many of those families in Leesburg are from Dougherty County, but I can get with Mrs. Williams and ask her about that. But we are planning to offer a second class here.
And that focus you said was on finance and relationships?
Yes.
Yeah, very important, very important. And I encourage you to continue to think outside the box. Ag is big, but a $57 million Farmgate is big in our community. And so I encourage you to continue to think outside the box. And anything we can do to help, I'm sure that we'll be on board.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Very good.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Jones?
Mr. Morgan, a couple things here. I was looking at the registered for junior 4-H summer camps. How many, how many did you all have go to summer camp? Just those questions like the crafts, how many people that you have participated?
Okay, I have that. We, we hosted a two-day craft event. That was five kids. For Global Leaf Camp, our quota was four. Because of COVID, we were, they reduced our number significantly. Normally, we have about twenty-five to thirty. And this year, they were in cohorts. So our county was given four, four slots, and we filled two of those. Our junior camp was given three slots, and we were able to secure two more slots. So we took five kids to junior camp, and we took one, one person to junior senior DPA.
Okay. Did we have any state winners this year?
No, sir. We did not have any state winners, so we did not go to state congress, which was last week.
Okay, good. Ms. West, you look like a 4-Her, young lady. You just look like a 4-Her. You're gonna have a lot of, you're gonna have a lot of fun with those kids. I looked like you when I was young. We had a lot of fun, because you look like you're gonna be one of them. Good luck to you and looking forward to anything we can help you with. Let us know.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Excellent presentation. Thank you. All right, we'll move on. Any other delegations that did not previously sign up, but wish to be heard at this time? All right. Purchases. Consider for action the recommendation to accept the quote to install new cameras at Turbo Grove Riverfront Parks for the Public Works Department from single-source vendor envisioned technologies in the amount of $22,110. Funding is budgeted in Spa Seven, County Parks Improvement Equipment. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? There being none, we'll call the matter for a vote. Those who favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Consider for action the recommendation to purchase one 2021 Hyundai Santa Fe SEL for the GBI Southwestern Regional Drug Enforcement Office from Albany Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram Hyundai out of Albany, Georgia for a not-to-exceed amount of $32,093. Funding will be provided by the GBIS WRDEO Grant Fund. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? There being none, we'll call the matter for a vote. Those who favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Consider for action the resolution providing for the execution and acceptance of the 2020 through 2025 Hazard Mitigation Plan. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? There being none, we'll call the matter for a vote. Those who favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Consider for action the acceptance and execution of the resolution providing for the use of the services of the Southwest Georgia Regional Commission for the purpose of preparing, submitting, and administering a fiscal year 2022 Community Development Block Grant COVID CDBG-CV Food Bank Application to the State of Georgia Department of Community Affairs. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? There being none, we'll call the matter for a vote. Those who favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Consider for action the recommendation to amend the fiscal year 2021 general fund budget from $53,664,296 to $54,427,231 for COVID-19 expenditures, fund balance use expenditures, FEMA COVID grant, civic life grant, and CARES grant. Also recommended amending the grants fund from $1,980,748 to $2,038,756 to show the heroes grant and to create the alternate dispute resolution fund as requested by Superior Court Judge Willie Lockett. Mr. McCoy and Ms. Henley.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We presented this at the work session last week. There was a slight adjustment in the way that the CARES Act reimbursement was accounted for. Last week, we recommended $55 million with the adjustment of the CARES Act funding because it was for expenses in FY '20. We backed that out, and the amount of the general fund amended budget is $54,427,231. We're recommending approval.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? There being none, we'll call the matter for a vote. Those who favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Mr. McCoy.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to take this time to acknowledge the loss of one of our valued employees, Mr. Eugene Mulkey. He passed yesterday as a result of COVID-19. He leaves behind a wife and five children. He was with us for about two and a half years, and he'll be sorely missed. Please keep him and his family in your thoughts and prayers.
We do. Thank you for letting us know. Anything else, Mr. McCoy?
No, sir. That's it. Thank you.
Mr. Lee?
Nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Newsom?
Nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Jones?
Yes, encourage your circle to please go get their vaccinations and wear these masks because these variants are coming, coming up. And the governor of Alabama, they asked her about it, and she said, we're gonna start blaming these folks who haven't taken these vaccinations for the, for the problem. So encourage your circle to be sure and mask up and take the vaccination. It's serious.
Commissioner Edwards?
Nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Gaines?
One question to the county administrator. If you could help me clear up the process, because you probably have explained it, but the process for the property tax non-rollback that was consented to, if from, from now out, what is the calendar and what are the steps involved?
I will email that to you, but we will, I don't have that information on me at this particular time. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right. Very good. Commissioner Jones?
Yes, sir. We have a citizen here that had a few words she wanted to state, small issues she may have had, and I think she missed the process.
Oh, I got you.
And I would like for Ms. Robertson to come down and address the commission.
Yes, ma'am. Good morning.
Good morning, George Chair. I appreciate the opportunity to be able to speak to you this morning. My issue here is to let you and make you aware of the issue that I had. Getting into the government building on Friday. I've had COVID this year. I'm experiencing things, inner body, outer body, that I've never had to deal with before in my life. I go to report to jury duty. I wasn't going to cause a problem. And upon my getting there, I've had this call for jury duty for about a month and a half, two months. You all know how early they send them out.
Yes, ma'am.
Nothing told me that I couldn't take my purse. I couldn't take a bottle of water, a cup of water, or any of those things. I've been in and out of this building all my life. I'm in my early 60s, and I am disabled. I was told that I couldn't bring my purse in. I don't have a problem with following rules and regulations. It was so hot, me running my air at 64 inside my vehicle, and immediately when I stepped outside of my car, my temperature gauge said it was 99 degrees outside. So I go on around. Before I could go there, I was sitting in my car for a minute. I'm having shortness of breath. This is an issue that I have developed since having COVID. And I know you probably have heard of a lot of people having and experiencing this. My girlfriend was, she pulled up at the same time that I did. And so after it took me so long to get out, she asked me, she said, you okay? She said, it took you a long time to get out of the car. I said, yeah. I said, I'm trying to make it to jury duty. I said, but a signal came on on my car. I just got my car at the shop Monday. I said, and it scared me. I said, and I started to try to turn around, and then I said, no, I know I need to go on. So she had gotten out and gone on in the building and came back out. And as she was on her way back out, I was on my way, just going into the building with the purse and everything. So I said, she said, I said to her, I said, well, I'm glad to know that you knew you didn't have to take a purse in. She said, girl, I wished I could have told you that. She said, with your issues and everything, I've had both knees replaced. I've had a hip replacement. And the end of 19, I had some metal done on my feet. I had some surgery done. So after she said that, she said, well, thank God, that old lady is not on the door. I said, what are you talking about? She said, that lady is outrageous. I said, well, good, because I'm having problems already, and I don't need that. So I get to the door. The gentleman that had told me that I couldn't take my purse and my cup, he said I could bring an empty cup in. And after he told me that, she, my girlfriend asked me if I wanted a ride around on the side, and I said, yes. So when I got ready to get out the car, she said, girl, are you okay? I know I was having shortness of breath, and it's a problem for me. So as I got ready to go up the ramp and got to the door, the officer standing there, he said, ma'am, are you okay? Because he knew it. He saw how my balance was off and everything. And I said, I'm having problems with, you know, breathing. I said, this is something I'm having an issue with since I had COVID. And I mentioned that to him. And so, as I stand there, and I told him, I said, officer, I am so hot. Can I step inside? He had already given me a mask from my first certificate at the door. This young lady came from wherever she was standing. It appeared to be against the wall. As you come in, it would be to the right. She was standing, young, young girl. And me not focusing on that, trying to get my composure and get everything together, because I had my phone, I had my pump for breathing, and I had some Kleenex and things in my hand. So she comes and she steps up and told me, ma'am, you can't come in this building without a mask. I said, well, I'm trying to put the mask on, and I couldn't do anything because of the fact that here I am struggling already trying to breathe. So she said to me, I wouldn't have let you in, because I had asked the officer. He reached out for my hand and asked me if I was okay. I asked him if I could step in. I needed some air. He told me to come on in. And when I came in, he told me, he said, lady, stuck right there in the chair, and put your mask on. And that was what I did. But she was so rude and vulgar and disrespectful to me till it was just pathetic. And for anybody to be that inhumane, I'm out of breath, gasping for breath. The gentleman could tell that I was having problems. And for her to step up, she wasn't the person greeting the people coming in the door. So at that point, I get in, put my mask on, and then there's another gentleman at the door. I'm used to putting my hands up, walking through the thing, the screen. I wear jewelry. I wear a lot of jewelry. He said, back up, ma'am. You need to take all your jewelry, that on your neck, off your hands, your arms, and everything. I said, hold on. I said, wait a minute. I said, what is wrong with you guys? And I said, Officer Wilson, why? I'm not officer. I'm Deputy Wilson. I said, listen, I gave you the honor to respect you as an officer. I said, I'm not gonna try to correct what I said to you. And I started taking, I said, I follow orders. I don't have a problem with that. And I started taking off my jewelry and stuff, feeling distressed. And I didn't give this officer name, but I really wish that I knew who he was, because after he saw all of the functions and the dysfunctions that were going on, he told me, he says, ma'am, he said, just come on through. I'll scan you. I'll do the one and get you on through the door. And I'm already late, running late from heaven to go back and come back, you know. So and after all of that, the guy did the one. So I go on upstairs. I run into the sheriff coming out the door. I called him Keller because we were classmates at our coming out the door. I called him Kelvin because we were classmates at Albany High School. And he happened to be coming out the door. And I said, Kelvin, you need to do something about the issue down there in that building. And I did that and I let him know. And he said, there, he said, I'll take care of you. He said, I need to go and take care of this. And he said, I promise you that I'll take care of it for you because we speak on whenever I've had an issue, I can call him and talk to him about that. So I, he had, the chief deputy Hayes, he sat down with me and he talked with me. He saw that I was in distress. He got me water to drink. He had the ba, the, whatever the guys are that was in their bailiff or whatever to get me a fan and something to help calm me down. They went on and finished the situation for me to finish up with the, whatever I was going before. I can't even think. That's a problem for me too, my memory. But anyway, he went on and they handled all of that for me and I really appreciate him for that. And when I got here today, I saw that he was here. So, and I want to thank him for the way that he treated me with somebody with respect. And I said to him, I said, Officer Hayes, I said, you people have a code blue when it come down to people reporting things to you guys. And I said, I'm not gonna deal with it. I said, I'm going to the city commissioners. At that time, I didn't know. And I was in tears when I left this building over here the other day. But before I left the building, Officer Wilson, Officer Hayes got the bailiff to walk with me downstairs. They asked me if I needed a wheelchair to get me to my car. And I told them I would be fine. I had calmed down. I had done my pump while I was sitting there talking to Officer Hayes. And we sat there for about thirty minutes or more and I was able to regain my composure. So after this, I'm coming out the elevator, the bailiff in my cell. He said, ma'am, are you sure you okay? He said, are you gonna be able to make it from here? I said, I should be able to. Immediately when I stepped out the elevator, at that point, I didn't have on a mask. The entire COVID time, I've worn a shield because I've always had sinus infections and suffered with bronchitis. And I wore the shield because I can't breathe through the other masks that they have, the blue mask that people give out for you to put on. I would take it and have to put it down under my nose in order to wear it. You see what I'm saying? So I'm walking out the door, didn't have the mask. And I had told Officer Hayes, I said, I can't breathe with this thing on. So he said, don't worry about it. So I'm going out the building. He getting ready to get up out of the chair, like as he's approaching me, ma'am, ma'am, you got to put on a mask to be in this building. I said, don't you say anything to me, young man. I said, you've upset me enough. And I proceeded to go on out the door. And after I got in my car and I sat there for a few minutes, I couldn't believe that I was treated that way. I couldn't breathe. I couldn't breathe. And I was treated like that to get in a government building. And not a one of them had compassion for me, Victor. Not a one. The one guy stepped up and there was a guy sitting down. He said, ma'am, it's gonna be okay. And they took, thanks to Officer Hayes and Kelvin made sure that I was taken care of. It's uncalled for. My girlfriend told me, thank God you don't have the old lady on the door. She's really nasty. Had no clue as to what she was talking about. Girlfriend stopped by yesterday for me to take her to her grandson back to Camilla, asked me to ride with her. I did that. I was sharing my experience with her. She said, girl, I work in Mary Polite's office. Been there fourteen years. She said, they did the same thing to me and made me strip. She said, I had my badge on and they treated me the same way. She said, they are so nasty. It is a problem that needs to be resolved. I'm tired of having to file and to go through the Office of Civil Rights in order to get my rights to be taken care of. I just had to do it with feed the company because of the treatment and the way that people think is their business. Something needs to be done. And I thank you all for giving me the opportunity to speak. And I'm sorry it took me so long, but this is what I'm dealing with. This is nothing that I asked for. I hold a degree in criminal justice. My bachelor's in criminal justice. I have an associate in psychology and an associate in sociology. I didn't come over there to cause a problem. That's not my nature. You know I've been harassed all my life at church. I had just had knee replacements, was on a walking cane. A church member wanted to make me park my car somewhere else. Mr. Johnson begged me, give me your keys. I'll move your car. I refused to. It's because if I'm not supposed to be among the who's who and where I park my car in a handicap spot, I wasn't fixing to move my car under no circumstances. I'm just as entitled as any other American in this world to be treated fairly. You know what I went through. And I don't only catch it there. Everywhere I go, it's a problem because I don't look like I'm disabled. I'm mistreated all the time. And I thank you all for listening.
Thank you very much. Mr. McCoy? Thank you. Can we please circle up with Chief Hayes and Sheriff Sproul to review this particular incident? It certainly sounds like a situation where, and, and I've seen this, I've seen where we have different personalities up front at the courthouse. Ms. Robinson, I'm, I'm very accustomed to the courthouse and I've seen, I've been there on days where we had the sunshine crew and I've been there on days where you had the crew that was the opposite of the sunshine crew. And, and it sounds like we had a bad day over there and that should not have happened. And I appreciate you sharing that information with us. And Chief Hayes, I'd appreciate it if, on behalf of the sheriff, you could get with Mr. McCoy if we could talk about how we can make sure that this doesn't happen. And also, I'd like to, and the sheriff's in charge of the courthouse, but I'm sure that there's probably some analysis that happens on whether our COVID-19 policy is ADA compliant and ADA friendly. That's something that is in my mind as I'm listening to Ms. Robinson speak. And I appreciate, I appreciate you taking the time to come here and share that. I get it. I understand it. Absolutely. Thank you very much. And, yes, ma'am. All right. And I'd, I'd like to get a report back on that at the next meeting. Mr. McCoy, please. Thank y'all. Commissioner Johnson?
Nothing further, sir.
Okay, very good. Commissioner Gray?
Nothing further.
All right, we adjourn.